To help develop, we gather the data to show the people of Green County who humbly seek your guidance and wisdom to navigate the challenges before us. Grant us the ability to listen with open hearts and mind to see the nature of the people clearly and make decisions that are just beneficial for all of us. We live by dedicated county employees and prayers, made to be filled with strength, passion, and unvailing commitment to excellence in their service. Lord, we come to you with heavy hearts and light for the recent tragic incidents within our community. We pray for all of those affected, the veterans, the famers, the law enforcement officers and their families, and those touched by the event. Grant them your peace, comfort, and understanding during this difficult time. May we, as commissioners and staff alike, work together in spirit of cooperation, respect, and compassion. Guide us toward solutions that promote the well-being and prosperity of Green County. Help others to serve and take with it a commitment to justice for all our members of the community. In all things, may your love and wisdom guide us, guide our actions, washing, uniting, and healing in among us. Grant us the strength to support one another, seek understandings in times of challenge. We hold your name with prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Fellow commissioners, you have in your packets the proposed agenda for today's meeting. Is there a need for any change to that proposed agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. You also have in your packets the proposed consent agenda for today's meeting. Is there a need for any change to the proposed consent agenda?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Excellent.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Do we have anyone for public comments? We'll go into the presentations. Mr. Kerr.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for the opportunity to come up this morning and speak to you. I wanted to introduce Dorian Sutton. He served with us as our intern this summer through the Golden Leaf Rule Internship Initiative. This was a... Dorian is a scholar with Golden Leaf, and Golden Leaf has a program where you can have interns come into your county to work on various projects, that sort of thing. So, we applied to have an intern come, and we were fortunate enough to be awarded the internship. And it was really a positive thing that we were able to get a homegrown Green County citizen to be able to come in and be an intern for us this summer. So, there were a couple different things that, you know, we talked about what Dorian was going to go through and the different projects. And one thing that we realized that we wanted to look at was the feasibility of changing to a different paging system. So, currently, we have a low-power paging system, it's a low-band system, and there are times where it's not... It's getting kind of antiquated, outdated, that sort of thing. So, really want to be proactive and look at some different options. So, that was one thing that we tapped Dorian would do, and Dorian is going to provide you a little bit of insight on what he's done and kind of what he's found. What's up?
Good morning, Mr. Sutton.
Good morning. As you know, as you said... Currently, I'm going to ECU to pursue a bachelor's in engineering. First of all, I wanted to thank Brock, Trey Cash, the Green County... Green County and the Golden Leaf Foundation for giving me this opportunity to intern this summer. Emergency services, particularly the fire service, has been a passion of mine since as long as I remember. I joined the Wallsburg Fire Department when I was 15 years old, and that has continued my passion in this field. And then, over the past few months, I had the opportunity to work with our dispatchers in the NAMM one center, learn from Andrew Harrison, our fire marshal, and work with Brock, our county management director. This internship has allowed me to see like the behind-the-scenes work that goes into making our county emergency services work efficiently and smoothly. My primary project, as Brock has stated, was the Viper system, looking into a viable option for paging over that system. And as you will see in this presentation, our Viper system, which is controlled by the North Carolina Highway Patrol system, is going to be upgraded in 2025. And so, this is a good time to transition over to the system since they're already upgrading. It's old, and it's becoming outdated, and the parts that we need to maintain maintenance on it is becoming less hard and harder to find. And so, you have to pay more money to maintain the current system that we have now. So, the paging options for the Viper system, there's really only one pager right now on the market that does it, and that's the Unification Pagers, the G five, G series. Some of the benefits, the pros from this pager, it has a Bluetooth capability, which you can... connected to it or connect to your car stereo through Bluetooth. It has a rugged design, so you can abuse it, and it'll still work pretty fine. The audio is pretty outstanding when it activates. Also, another benefit, which is one of like really significant, is that you can monitor other radio traffic in other counties, like Lenore or Wilson or Pitt. And you can't do it on the same zone of the pager, but you can switch over to it. And then, like, all to those other counties, you can monitor their traffic so you know what's going on without having to radio. Some of the cons is that the pager itself is higher in cost initially. It's also kind of bulky, really, really bulky. And as I said and stated before, it's only a pager on the market that is capable of using that system, the Viper system. All right, so the data, initially, I didn't know who I was on, to be honest. So, I went around the county, started testing, and the pager was like hidden miss. I couldn't understand like what was going on. But as I talked with a couple people, like Dorian Howie and John Bro, they pointed me in the right direction. So, in order for the pager to work, there has to be a radio with the county affiliated with the county using the tower that the pager is reading. And so, if the pager and the radio are not reading the same site, it's not going to go off at all. And that's... After we figured that out, we were able to have more radios put on the system that were forced to like different sites. And so, once we did that, there was pretty much coverage everywhere. Don't worry about what site was hidden because the only two sites... And so, as you see up there, when we were testing it, using that parameter, there was like no, no bad activation rate. So, the insights, as I stated before, the initial data was based off some assumptions. The latest data considers these assumptions, and there's like four potential dead zones in the county that I found because the pager and the radio was hitting the same site, but it still didn't go off. But that was with using the channel that was scanning multiple sites. It had like 39 other sites besides the two sites that was found throughout county. So, that's the reason why it wasn't working. Conclusion, so with this system, with this pager, I think it will work pretty well for our county. It does pretty well once everything is coming together pretty smoothly. I think probably have to test a little bit more during the years, the months coming up to the change, but it's a promising solution for our county. And do you have any questions?
Where were the dead zones at?
So, the dead zones, I found one on Graysmill Road, also in Jason's District. There was a little dead spot right there, and then there was one in Maury by Half Moon Road, and not sure why it didn't go off there, but it didn't go off.
Okay, that's three.
Three.
Remember where that was?
The other one was in Cooper Ten towards the North Carolina. Thank you. Any more questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Sutton?
Well, I thank y'all for having me.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
We did want a picture of Mr. Sutton, our first Golden Leaf intern. I think it's been a successful internship.
I think that would be great.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Do it one more time. I want you to stand while you're doing it.
I know you look good. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be appropriate if we had a candidate to make him a plaque with "Tipped It" to the first intro for Golden Leaf. That could be highly appropriate.
Or do something to recognize him. Sure will. Mr. County Manager.
Let me get my set back up. Okay. Thank you, sir. Just a few items for your attention for action today. Our first being review of a proposed mass gathering ordinance. If you recall, this mass gathering ordinance was dispersed to you all at our last meeting. At that time, I asked for comments to improve, make better, make most whole for Green County. In that time, I've only received two comments. The first requesting the emergency services director to be given the authority to break up a mass gathering. The second was to lower the number that would encompass a mass gathering from 500 to 300. Knowing those requests for change were made, I would ask for direction from the board on how you would like this initial mass gathering ordinance to read for publication.
I have a question there.
Yes, sir.
You know, in looking at overall this, you know, it contains a lot, and it's a big issue when you, you know, really look at it overall because, I mean, gatherings, I mean, there's gatherings everywhere. You know, you got churches and, you know, pews and just all sorts of things that can come in mind of how, you know, how we gonna work through this stuff.
So, in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, that is, there are exemptions, and that's number four. So, this ordinance shall not apply to any local, state, or federal government agency acting within the scope of its governmental functions, any school or college operating in Green County. So, a football game or a graduation, that wouldn't apply. Church or worship activities within a facility, okay, that wouldn't apply. So, if a larger church is having a function at the church, that doesn't count. We want to encourage places of worship to work with their congregations, businesses holding events in venues designated to hold large numbers of people, and gatherings sponsored by recognized political parties or candidates, okay? So, there are some exemptions, if that helps in answering that question, sir.
You know, say for instance, community gathering, it's like something that... How does that affect just a community gathering that somebody says, "I want to have a function in this community," and, you know, they have, once it's announced, you have no idea where the people are coming from and how many is going to be there. How does that affect?
So, how are they allowing people to become aware of this? Yes, Derek?
The state has an exemption in their mass ordinance, whatever the general status, whatever you call it, and there's as much as like 5,000 people. But they have an assumption that if you have had an annual event for five consecutive a year, be grandfathered in for example. You know what I'm talking about? The people like, it's like, I want to shine Snow Hill Fire Department, they have a great big drive for joy, and let's sell tickets. So, they have the event for five consecutive years that they've been sent. And some of the stuff that he's talking about is Snow Hill, you have South Green Illuminize Association, they're talking about, they have this great big event, they have 300 people with it sometimes at lunchtime, and other times, you know, we don't have like 100 people. And then you also have that Juneteenth thing by Jerry Jones, which probably get 200 people at lunchtime, it'd probably be, I don't know how many people, because I've never been at lunchtime. I can say maybe perhaps, perhaps we can go back and add an exemption that if you have had an annual event for five consecutive years, it'd be exempt from getting the permit, but you would still have to give notification that the event, that we won't tie up our resources for something. That's a suggestion.
Is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, because, you know, sometimes, just like the community center, we have our annual event every year. I mean, you have no idea how many people are going to be there, really. I mean, it's just a lot of folks sometimes, you don't know, you know. So, those are the kind of things that, you know, that I'm thinking about, and a lot of times, people just hear about it, and they just come, you know? It's not nothing that you can send out, notice to everybody that you might. Thank you for be coming, you just don't know. I mean, I understand, you know, the importance of it, but, you know, I just don't, it's something that's kind of a little clear in my mind, it'll work out altogether.
So, for the alumni association, would that be somewhat of a school event, or could we kind of steer in that direction? So, I believe that would be covered. And the Juneteenth, I don't know where that could be covered. Any suggestion?
It's a holiday. You can say it's a holiday.
It is a state holiday.
State holiday, state. And that particular, I mean, people having things, you know, that particular time, you know, so many different places, so, but, you know, just different places, but, you know, controlling and what, there we go.
So, in a way, I would say Juneteenth may, we would have to look, want to register. They may not. If you recall, that a big part of this ordinance was in response to unknown. Juneteenth is very advertised, and then also, this just lays the foundation for a safety and structured process for permitting. I do know that they have restroom facilities available. We go there annually, and there's a schedule of events and all that stuff. We would have to see if or how that falls into this policy, but I do believe that your other concern is covered, the Alumni Association, in one of the exemptions.
Okay, I mean, I have no problem with it, it's just a lot of things that, you know, I'm thinking about.
Open the suggestions on approving it. It's your ordinance. We want to make it fit Green County the best that we can. If you see things that need added, taken from it, we're all ears.
I know, I know in this, we don't have a time, cutoff time, but I know we have a noise ordinance for 11 o'clock, correct?
Uh, yes, right now we do.
If this is a residential area, I think we need to change that to either 9 or 12 o'clock.
I agree with you.
I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay.
And a prime example would be the fire department. It's not in a residential section in Snow Hill. Shine's not in a residential section. But like the thing they had in Shine, that's a residential area. We need to have something in place where people ain't got to sit there and listen to it till 11 o'clock at night. And I know that falls upon Matt, and if Matt needs to hire somebody to enforce these stuff, we need to hire somebody.
Well, what I know is that the noise ordinance is being reviewed at this time, too. I would advise against changing times in one ordinance. It just gets more complicated. We need to have some continuity, some alignment of our ordinances. So, before we change the time, I would say maybe we should wait for the noise ordinance to be updated so that they work together. Does that make sense?
Well, we kind of need to do all this at the same time, whatever we want to do.
I agree. And this is a work in progress.
Sure.
We know it is. One other prime example could be there probably be an American Day in Wallsburg. You know, I can see where you could have more than 300 people there throughout the day, you know? So, it's all about looking out for the safety of all involved. Our citizens, those who are having the event, everybody deserves to be insured to the greatest degree of safety that we can provide.
You know what the table is till we can get the other information?
Well, the thing in Wallsburg that they have would be local.
It is local.
Yeah, but you have people coming from everywhere. You don't know how many some days, you know, it just depends on the weather and everything else.
Depends on the weather and what's happening somewhere else.
Yeah, that's right.
Because it's a busy time at times.
Yeah, ECU officials are usually in that time window.
Yeah. If, is that a motion to table this for further consideration?
Let's table this for consideration.
For further consideration.
Kyle can get the other information for Mr. James, too.
That's fine. Have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to table. Any further discussion?
Now, I don't want to table it for no three or four months.
At the next meeting.
Yeah.
You got to add a time to it.
I want to get this done.
Okay, I agree.
Table it to the next meeting.
Motion and a second to table the next meeting and a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Good input.
Thank you. Our next item for your attention is the need to reappropriate funds to purchase trucks in the public works, that's landfill and water. These trucks were for the 23, 24 fiscal year. We ordered them, waited, they didn't come until July. State law says that we have to record the expenditure when it happens. It happened second week in July, so we're asking to reappropriate those funds. That would be, I guess, retained earnings in the prior year to the current year so we can pay for the vehicles. Are there questions?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second and a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. My next item for your attention is the approval of program management and engineering services for the CBGI project, Maury Wastewater Treatment Plant project. We issued an RFP, request for proposal, for program management services to a list of engineering firms, and at the same time, we also issued a RFQ, request for qualifications, to a list of engineering firms. We did receive two responses for each meeting the requirements of the grant. The low-cost responsible responsive bidder was McDavid and Associates for the program management services, and then also, the highest scoring evaluation for matrices from a panel of county staff for the engineering services was McDavid and Associates as well. So, it would be management and staff's recommendation to approve program management and engineering services for the CBGI to McDavid and Associates.
Move to accept, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to accept the recommendation. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Motion and a second and a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. My next item for your attention is the approval of program management and engineering services for the CBGI project, Maury Wastewater Treatment Plant project. We issued an RFP, request for proposal, for program management services to a list of engineering firms, and at the same time, we also issued a RFQ, request for qualifications, to a list of engineering firms. We did receive two responses for each meeting the requirements of the grant. The low-cost responsible responsive bidder was McDavid and Associates for the program management services, and then also, the highest scoring evaluation for matrices from a panel of county staff for the engineering services was McDavid and Associates as well. So, it would be management and staff's recommendation to approve program management and engineering services for the CBGI to McDavid and Associates.
Move to accept, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to accept the recommendation. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Motion and a second and a further discussion.
I just want to say, since Mr. Sutton, the engineers do, make sure you leave your business call to county manager.
Any other further discussion? Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. My next item for your attention this morning is approval for a non-emergency transport franchise application recently received. An application was received for the non-emergency transport, car line transport. They've completed the process, and they request for approval. This would be non-emergency medical response, like it is currently providing in our system.
I just want to point out that I read the applications, and several missed filings in that because it's actually Caroline, not Coraline. They missed out on some, I just make sure it's right in there.
Yeah.
See, that's one of the places they missed.
Right.
If you go to the logo, it's got Caroline with an E in it.
Yeah, I saw that in other places. I went from the...
Several places.
Do we need these additional medical services at this time, or do you think we need to wait and see what?
I know in the past, we had two non-emergency transport systems in our system, and I believe it was medics, and medics couldn't drum up the business to sustain. Now, I still see their trucks in the county area, and they may be in other places, I don't know. So, the question becomes, do you want to give them a chance in our system, or do you want to...
It doesn't cost us anything, does it?
It does not cost us anything.
And they all rent a building from...
An individual. In Hookerton, and they have paid...
They have the county.
They've done what they're supposed to do. It's up to the board if you want another provider for non-emergency medical transport in our system at this time.
That's a question for the director. Yep.
Do you have a motion?
I don't want to see them fail.
I don't either.
I kind of like to keep them on standby. If the business picks up or whatever, these would be the ones we'd go to.
Well, it's not going to cost us anything. I don't see why we don't take it because they all going to rent a building in Green County.
I thought it was, here's the thing. A lot of times, we have a fatality, a wreck, somebody dies, stuff, that's when you call these second emeralds out there, right, correct? So, I mean, you don't want to tie up our resources, tell them to send a body somewhere or two. It's not going to affect us, really. So, I mean, if you're pro-business, if you're not pro-business... So, I mean, if you're pro-business, if you're not pro-business.
And they all rent a building in Green County, so that's going to happen to county. I move to approve it.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I have another question. You have one provider that's left, right? So we only have one there?
We have one.
And, oh, you know, when you have competition there, is it going to be enough for two people to, you know, maintain a business here in Green County? Because, I mean, who knows when the service is going to be needed?
Right.
And, you know, sometimes the population of a place is not large enough to sustain.
And that's what we saw in the past, sir. And that's why I put that in there as caution. But it, I see both sides to this. So, it comes down to your thoughts and what you all think. It's in the best interest of the county at this time.
Well, I mean, I have no problem with them, you know, trying, but we may wind up one of them leaving again, you know?
That's what worries me.
Well, it's not going to hurt the county.
Financially.
Financially. It's a risk that the new business is going to be taken.
Taken, right.
And medics did not succeed because of a lack of call volume. Is that a fair statement?
Certainly.
And so, you know, I don't have a problem with the new business, but do recognize that there are concerns about call volumes being sustainable for them to maintain their business. I guess is my one apprehension. Whatever the wishes of the board is, is fine.
I'll put a motion out there.
You have a motion.
So, you want to give them a chance? I mean, it's not going to.
Yeah, I want to give them a chance.
It's not going to hurt the county.
I mean, it's not going to hurt us.
Right.
Have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Have a nay. Motion is carried, forward to one.
Thank you, sir. My next item for your attention is an appointment to the Board of Adjustments. It's actually an appointment and one reappointment. An application was received to take the place of a member who no longer wishes to serve. And then a. And then, an application was received for a reappointment. Those two members, the member for the application to take the place of the person who no longer wishes to serve is Ms. Tracy Hayes. And the application to continue according to other terms is Jessica Byrd. No other applications were received. It's the request of the planning director to appoint and reappoint the two applicants.
Move to approve both of them, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve both appointments, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of that motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next is an appointment to the planning board. It is a reappointment. There was only one applicant of a current member whose term is expiring. This would be for another term. That's Mr. Salvador Canoco. The request of the planning director is that this applicant/reapplicant be reappointed.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you. My last item for your attention this morning is approval of the location of a co-location of the civics software, the banking software, credit union software, that they had mentioned in our last meeting and presentation. Staff provided three locations that we thought would meet their needs according to what they presented and we all talked about at the board meeting. They chose a location that would most suit their needs in the government complex, in that corner where the pictures of you all are hanging, opposite of the water fountain in the kitchen area. It's my understanding they'll create a podium or a stand of some sort to protect their equipment and so that these transactions of whomever can serve not only be employees, but also the citizens. If you recall, the software will only allow for civics banking not other searching of the internet and stuff.
Move to approve that area, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
I have something to say. I don't mind, I've got my iPad, laptop up in our counter for children. I always can be before our employees, I have firefighters, people, you know, it's just. I would feel much comfortable with this if we'd been able to sign a waiver saying the camera's not responsible if it gets stolen, broken, or hacked into. Because, you know, when we went through that conference, I sure, your national guard said you can be standing right through it, take a five dollar app, hacked right into the system. So, I think it's probably advisable that we have a waiver signed that we help us first.
We'll leave the legal process to our highly qualified attorney. And the podium would be so theft would be deterred. And it's also right in the direct line of sight of a camera. So, we will take all reasonable action to secure and secure the location and people's information. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Madam Attorney, do you have any perils of wisdom for today?
No comments.
Thank you. Commissioner reports some recommendations.
I have served on the Eastport Governing Board for over a decade, advocating for services and care for the men of the ill and intellectually disabled of eastern North Carolina. And during my tenure on that board, we have seen our coverage area grow from four to 46 counties with the recent merger with Trillium. At all times, I have been a boss for the needs of Green County and other eastern North Carolina counties of those often overlooked issues. In my role as Chairman of Eastport Governing Board and Executive Committee, I have at all times acted in good faith to fulfill the direction of Eastport Governing Board and the Secretary of North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. In doing so, I relied upon the trusted and advice of guidance of the Eastport Attorney and executives, especially the most recently, while the Eastport Governing Board was confronted with the challenge of two mandatory mergers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I would like to announce also that on Thursday this week, from 6 to 7, at the Senior Citizens Center, there will be an area recovery course and harm reduction program presented that evening. Miss Brock with the Health Department and others are involved in this process. And that will be Thursday evening from 6 until 7 at the Senior Citizens Center.
She said there's going to be three others. You said you have two or three other meetings?
We're going to try to schedule two or three more.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you can't make that one, be able to make the other one, mate.
Okay.
Move to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege and economic.
Before we go into, I would like to, there's something that's bothering me. On a recent post, there was a comment made that we had cut training funds for our employees. And upon research, I see that we have not cut training funds for our employees. I'm very concerned that we would have a post that alleges that. I'm very concerned that in a post, that it was alleged that Green County's tax levy per capita was at $982 in that post. That is not correct. The actual number is $513 per capita tax levy in Green County. There's a county in the state that has a lesser tax levy than Green County, and that is Swain County. And they are $512, they are $1 or less than Green County. I regret that the allegation in there is that it was $982. This is incorrect. It's a mistake. Electronic media is very valuable. But be sure that if you make decisions based on what you see in electronic media, if you have any questions, you do your research and find out what the actual numbers may be. There may be some errors in what has been posted. That kind of bothers me a little bit. There's no doubt about it. We're all proud of Green County. Green County is one of 100 unique counties in this state. If you look at Green County's taxable property per capita, we are at the bottom. Green County is a low-well, materialistically county. And our average taxable property per capita is $65,000. And we are number 100 in the state. But we're a proud county. We have a lot to be proud of in Green County. Our people are exemplary. Our employees are exemplary. Our high school baseball team this year was exemplary and won the state championship. We're a good little rural, damn home county. There are 85 rural counties in the state and we are one. I'm proud of Green County, but it kind of bothers me a little bit when data that is put out there by someone that, you know, kind of, kind of, it's just incorrect. That's, I don't have, I have, I take issues with that. And so, just kind of wanted to make sure that those who may have read the post that shed a negative light upon this county and this board and this administration, I wanted to say a few things of fact and get it out there. Anybody else have anything to say before we go into session? Here are none, I have a motion to go into closed session, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the motion is carried, we're going into closed session.